I'd like to call to order the Richland II Board of Trustees February 14th, 2023, regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admissions.
We're approving the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
You're a little bit ahead of yourself.
Sorry.
But I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
That's what I get for coming in. So I move to approve the agenda for the February 14th, 2023, regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I'd like to move, let's see if I can find it and say it right, the discussion for policy B E D B to a workshop session for us to have more discussion about that at another meeting.
So you'd like to amend the agenda?
Right.
To postpone?
To postpone the revision approval of policy B E D B board agenda.
Is there a second? I will second the motion. As a board chair, I can second the motion. Is there any discussion? No, I will just say, go ahead, Mrs. Washington.
So I would like for us to be very clear of when we're going to have these work sessions so that we'll know and be prepared for these discussions.
Well, and that's a great question. I would love to let you know, but just in the last week, when we sent out an email to see if we could meet on March 10th, I haven't had confirmation from all of our colleagues yet that we are able to meet then. Hopefully, within the next month or so, we will have that. But it is a little difficult to coordinate with everybody the time, and we will continue to work on that.
Madam Chair.
Excuse me, Mrs. Nash.
I would just like for us, you know, just as a board, you know, we've had this for over a month, and so everyone has had time to look over it and even make suggestions. So we can't keep putting off some of these things because they are important. And mainly, this was brought up because we want everybody to have an opportunity to be heard, but not only be heard, but everybody should have an opportunity to learn the agenda process so that we all are aware of, you know, what we are doing.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Any further discussion? So we're first going to vote on the secondary motion to postpone B E D B until a board workshop. Ms. Counsel, we do a hand vote? No, we can actually vote on the computer. So it's up right there. Oh. Okay. So is the motion correct, Ms. Porter? Okay, board members, please vote. And if you need to hand vote, those in favor raise your right hand. Excuse me? Because Mrs. Nash isn't up. I'm just saying, if she needs to raise her hand to say, if you need to, do a hand vote. So the vote is, so the motion fails because the vote is three, I'm reading that correctly, three yes, three no, so the motion fails. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the, or is there any more discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Okay, can we have the?
Are we missing someone?
We're missing Mr. Trapp is not here yet.
So if the vote is equal?
It has to have a majority vote, which would be 50 plus point one, and if it's a split vote, then the motion fails.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I'd like to look at policy B E D N, no, not B E D N, I'm sorry. No, this one actually won't need to be moved at this time. Never mind, there's no action needed for it.
Okay, all right. So we'll go back to the main motion of approving the agenda. It was Dr. Scott. So the motion is, there are five yes, one no, and one not present. So the motion carries. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breach of contracts, employment recommendations, and certified releases and interim superintendent contract.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to go into executive session. Mrs. Nash, is the motion posted correctly?
That's correct.
And the vote is six yes, zero no, and one not present. The motion carries. We'll now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we ended executive session at 6:30, 6:00 PM, that we reconvene in regular session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Nash to come out of executive session. Is there any discussion? As there is no discussion, board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, there are zero no, so the motion carries. Next on our agenda is our inspirational moment. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Jennifer Bartel Boykin, who will provide tonight's inspirational moment. Ms. Bartel Boykin teaches at Spring Valley High School and was named the 2019-2020 Teacher of the Year. Recently, she was recognized as the poet laureate of the city of Columbia. Her debut, her debut book of poetry, Travelling Mercy, will be released in November 2023 under the name Jennifer Bartel. Ms. Bartel Boykin.
While she's walking up, I'm going to add, you must be famous because I had you on my list to have you to come for March and Wednesday. So you're coming back, I'm just joking.
Cut her down for March.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Our chair board asked me to, board person, asked me to share a poem about Black history, love, or family. And I have a poem that's about all three, and the love is about family and love throughout the generations. So there are four different perspectives in this poem, and I'll kind of state what those perspectives are. But the title of the poem is Reminiscence, Reminiscences of Children to Come. I am a sharecropper in summer who woke up this morning with you on my mind. Went down the roads and picked a bushel. All the time I saw you, you with your nutmeg skin and a smile big as the fields. Ate some blood pudding and cold grits. Drunk water from my cupped hands. I looked to the sky and saw a cloud in the shape of your dreams. I am the sharecropper's wife in wintertime. It was cold today. Little Irene's feet are blistering from the shoes Mrs. Cox gave us. She'll have corns someday and bunions, too. Our clothes are tattered, our ashed brown skin exposed to the colds of life. But I see you standing beside a church. You are in an Easter dress with shoes too big because your little feet will grow into them. You're going to see Irene's toes, and you will know. I am Irene in the middle of life, and I dust this furniture, scrub this floor, cook this food, watch these children, watch my young days go by, watching my young days go by, watched my young days go by. Baby, I worked in white folks' homes all day for a hog head. I'm praying for you, and for all the prayers I'm going to ever pray, you will never get paid a hog head for a day's work. I am a spirit of an ancestor on the Middle Passage. At dusk, the horizon said to me, "The dawn will come generations from now. The dusk, it said for me to tell you, my sweet dawn, to make good with your life. Do not let this ride on this boat be for nothing. Listen to my song singing within your soul. You are my reason for survival, and I am yours." Thank you. Would everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Bartel Boykin, for getting us started off on a great note. Moving on to item five, the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the February 14th, 2023, board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we able to discuss, I know we can't discuss names and things of that nature in depth for 5.3, but are we able to have a discussion about 5.3?
What you would do is ask to have 5.3 pulled from the consent agenda. Actually, so your request is to have it separated. You want to discuss 5.3?
Yes, but I can do it in the next meeting because this will, this will be on the meeting if it's not appropriate to do it now.
Okay, so we can do it now? We just break it up? If one person wants the consent agenda broken up, we must do it. You don't need a second. But if this is a recurring conversation, you want to have it at our next meeting, we can do that as well.
Well, can we go ahead and discuss, can we break up the agenda so that we can discuss 5.3?
All right, so we're going to break up the consent agenda. So do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to approve the minutes from the January 24, 2023, regular board meeting and the January 31st, 2023, board work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Porter to approve the minutes for the two meetings. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is the motion correct?
That is correct.
And the vote is seven yes, zero no, so the motion carries. Okay, item 5.3, the classified employment releases and in district transfers. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
Let's see, sorry. I move to approve the board classified employment releases and in district transfers.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes, so in looking, thank you. So in looking at these items, I have to say that it continues to be alarming that we see almost like a coming in of 20, 30 new employees and then an exit of 28, 30 employees every single time we have this list. And so it's concerning because although we say these are support and classified, to have this many employees continue to leave the district at this rate, it's alarming. And so I want to be very clear when I say this, we have people leaving for personal reasons and for, and some people, they've only been here for less than six months. What are we doing in terms of really looking at the data as it relates to, and this may, you may not be able to answer this question, I understand, but what are we doing in terms of making sure that we are providing an atmosphere where people want to come and work? This is every time we look at this list. It's 28, it's 30, 28, 30. We hire 28 people and 30 leave the next time. So what are we doing at that level to make sure that we're doing everything in our power to keep our employees?
Mrs. Gregory.
I think that's where we continue to have the conversation that we started, I think, at the last meeting, where we talked about retention, and that we are continually trying to beef up the retention and recruitment efforts that we have. Bus Driver Appreciation Week was this week, and we have tried to make sure that we have special recognitions, that we have incentives for folks, special trainings. I know that one of the things that we've talked about and we shared with y'all in the board brief are some of the additional things we've done to, we're talking about classified, I know, but also retaining our retirees and other ways that we can hire them. And we've also looked at job sharing in some instances or cases. I will be happy to get more from, talk to HR and also Mr. Anderson in operations and give you an update on classified and some of the things that we're doing because I think mainly, we talked about last time, we talked more about certified personnel than we did with classified.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington, are you finished?
No, I was going to say, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. Mrs. Nash?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we did talk about, a little bit about retention last time, but I agree with Ms. Washington. You know, this week, it's 25 out of 28 of the people are either personal or looking for other opportunities. And I know that we've talked about, you know, there is a plan, and I think I said then, when we weren't talking about certified, that even if there's a plan, are we looking at the metrics of how are we retaining them? And if it's not working, then what are we looking at to see what is working? And if there's other places that it is working, because I think Ms. Washington brought it up last time, and maybe some others here on the board, about the signs that we see from other districts that are recruiting our employees left and right, and for whatever reason, that seems to be attractive. And so whatever they're doing, we need to look at that because 25 out of 28 this week and, you know, 25 out of whatever the next week is agreed alarming.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott, I think, wants to be recognized first, then you, Mrs. Nash, or, excuse me, Mrs. Porter.
Yes, and I guess my question would be, are we still providing the exit interviews for these employees? And if so, what is the percentage of them completing the exit interview and returning that back to HR?
We are collecting and keep exit data, and I don't have that data with me right now, but we can certainly get that to you.
Yes, I would love to see that monthly in the board brief, the exit data of the exit interview.
Mrs. Porter.
Yes, I know that we'll be talking about budget items soon. I just wanted to state that I look forward to hearing at least a request of some specifics of what might be needed to help this situation, if some of these items that are stated as personal, if by chance, it's pay. I'd like for that to be presented with some possible numbers for us to consider, or at least for the budget and finance committee to consider, and that would shorten the amount of discussion or the amount of time spent in that discussion if that is brought to the committee ahead of time.
Madam Chair. Certainly.
I agree with Ms. Porter. I have requested the list of positions, this is specifically for district office, though, but I know that they can give us other information about the certified positions that they have so that we can know when it comes to budget time exactly how many positions we have, how many positions that we need, how much we would need to pay them, and that, I've sent this request several times, so if we can try to get that. I know it was stated that I may try, may be able to get it the first of March, but I just want to reiterate that, you know, the email that I sent concerning the number of employees, how long they've been in the district, that way we have a good idea of why they're leaving if they've been here for a while.
Mrs. Washington.
And one more thing as well, in terms of, you know, I know this is classified, and I know we talk a lot about teacher, increasing teacher pay, but are we also making sure that we are offering competitive pay for our classified employees as well? $8 an hour is not enough money for somebody to sustain. I would leave the district as well. So how can we make sure that we are competitive in what we're offering when it comes to certain positions so that we're not losing people to similar jobs and similar businesses or similar districts? That's another thing I would like to make sure that we are also, if we're looking at increasing teacher pay as well, that we're making sure that we're increasing classified staff pay as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Any other comments? No more comments? Can we have the motion posted? And the motion is correct. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Moving on to item 6.1, public participation. As we welcome our public to speak to us this evening, please remember that we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Additionally, the board will not permit in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Tonight, we'll start with Ms. Taylor Maldonado. Ms. Taylor Maldonado, speaker number two, Ethan Lopez.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ethan Lopez. I am 15 years old, and I attend Westwood High School. At the last regular scheduled board meeting, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, teacher retention and whatnot, and Dr. Scott brought up a great point, asking what we are offering teachers to stay, to stay when they meet the 28-year mark. Some things I can suggest is respect, being treated like a human being by their administration, being heard, listened to, not having to sub during their planning periods, maybe having, maybe when they send kids to the office, to be disciplined, that they not be sent back to class with a pat on the back and a snack. I have seen that happen over and over again, and it's quite concerning. Not a single board member at the last board meeting brought up any of the real issues teachers are facing besides pay every day causing them to leave. I have talked to teachers all over the state, and they seem to have the same issues. These two are the most popular in our district, lack of student discipline and lack of respect and communication between them and their admin. Instead of giving our teachers meetings that could easily be an email, why not give, why not, does this board set up a conference that this, that is required to attend by administrators on how they are to treat, listen to, and respect our teachers, and how they are to discipline students and not send them back to class with a pat on the back and a snack? For anyone who has an issue with this, I am more than willing to help you write out your resignation letter because you should not be working in our district if you have an issue with giving respect to teachers and treating them like a decent human being. My other concern is the amount of money we don't spend on our teachers and their classroom supplies. They spend thousands over their career, and a lousy check from the district is almost insulting. I know one way we can save 150 grand and give back to our teachers is by getting rid of a position labeled as Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer, when in reality, there's nothing inclusive about it when the main idea around it is to take away opportunities from kids who earned it and give them back to kids who didn't earn it just based on their race, just to make them feel included. And that goes against everything Martin Luther King believed in. So again, my name is Ethan Lopez. I can be your biggest advocate or your worst nightmare because when it comes to our teachers and students, education and their work environment, I don't like to play around about that. And like Ms. Nash would say, if you don't want something fixed, don't call me. You cannot buy our teachers, you can earn our teachers by giving them the respect they deserve. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And our final speaker this evening will be Mr. Gus Philpott.
Thank you. I'm Gus Philpott, members of the board, superintendent. First of all, I'd like to thank Chair Agostini for speaking up clearly and directly into the microphone. I was able to hear. I'll admit to some hearing loss. The district provides me with a hearing assistance device, which tonight is inoperative. So I was unable to hear many of the board members tonight, who spoke in soft, quiet voices and turned their heads away from the microphones. On the agenda tonight is item 8.1. On the agenda tonight is item 8.1, the board agenda. I'd like to thank Trustee Porter for her motion earlier this evening to postpone that agenda item. That was an excellent motion, and I'm sorry it wasn't supported. It's not a good revision. Richland II School District is a $1 billion business with a $300 million annual budget. It's not an after-school club. Setting the agenda by consensus will result in more very long board meetings with little accomplished. Your role is to direct the superintendent, not to run the district. You may have heard the story about the committee that was formed to design a horse. After many meetings, what did they end up with? A zebra. You're still struggling to learn how to function as a board. There are too many personal agendas in play. There is no reason to revise the policy about who sets the agenda for board meetings. In my opinion, you are usurping the authority of the chair. You propose that a group set the agenda with the superintendent. The possibility is too great that the group will stray from essential duties and responsibilities of the board and wander into pet projects. A superintendent, whether interim or permanent, will never know which way the wind is blowing from one agenda planning meeting to the next. There's still time to postpone agenda, item 8.1, the board agenda, tonight. When item 8.1 is called, I recommend that you table it. The way you do that is when the item is called, one board member says, "I move to table item 8.1." Then a second board member seconds it, discuss it, and then vote yes to table it and leave it on the table. Or wait until a workshop where you can discuss it thoroughly, evaluate the consequences of such a change in this board policy, understand those consequences clearly, and I think you probably decide to leave the policy the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Moving on to voting on executive session items, item 7.1, Student Appeals. And board members, before we start, would anybody like any, the plan is to group them together, would anybody like them, one of them polled? Or can we do it as a group motion? Pardon me? Are you, if you would speak into the microphone so that we can hear your request?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I'd like for them to all be called individually.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so we'll do them individually. Thank you, Mrs. Porter.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to deny the appeal for student number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Is the motion correct, Mrs. Washington?
It's correct.
And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Do I have a motion for student number two?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that student number two attend Blackwood Academy.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion? And the motion is correct, Mrs. Washington? And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Do I have a motion for student number three?
Yes, I move student number three attend Blackwood Academy.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Dr. Scott for the student number three to attend Blackwood Academy. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Mrs. Washington, is the motion correct?
Yes.
The motion is correct. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. And do I have a motion for student number four?
Yes, I move to deny the appeal for student number four.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Dr. Scott to deny the appeal for student number four. Is there any discussion? And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Item 7.2, Student Admission Request into Adult Education Program. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students one through four.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Mrs. Porter, could you please correct the motion? Or verify the motion?
It's correct.
And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Item 7.3, Breach of Contracts. Do I have a motion for employee number one?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we do not direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding employee number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Board, is there any discussion? Mr. Trapp, can you please verify the motion is correct?
That is not correct. It should read, "We do not direct the administration." Oh, okay, I see the "not" is in a different spot, okay.
So the motion is correct? And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Employee number two.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we direct the administration not to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding employee number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Mr. Trapp, can you please verify the motion is correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Employee number three.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding employee number three who breached their employment contract with the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Mr. Trapp, can you please verify the motion?
That is correct.
And the vote is seven yes, or, excuse me, six yes, one no, the motion carries. Item 7.4, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to approve employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Mrs. Nash, can you please verify the motion?
That is correct.
Thank you. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Item 7.5, Interim Superintendent's Contract. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move that we authorize you to send a letter to Nancy Gregory confirming the terms of her assignment as interim superintendent, including that effective January 19th, 2023, during the time period in which serves as the interim superintendent of the district, she will receive a monthly supplement of $5,500, along with a monthly automobile allowance of $1,000 for in-district travel within the Midland area.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Mrs. McFadden, can you please verify that the motion is correct? And the motion is correct.
Madam Chair. I don't know if it matters, but I move that, I think it had you as the board chair, does that matter? Because it says that we authorize, but I think what she, her motion was you as the board chair, is that right?
I read what I was, what was written. It says authorize you, so I guess it would be Madam Chair.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, so, okay, that might be right. Okay.
So I'll restate it. Let's do that first line. I move that we authorize the board chair to send a letter to Nancy.
We've already got the motion on the floor, a second.
That is correct.
All right. Yes. Who are you missing a vote from? A hand vote, is that okay? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? That was seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Are we good to move on, Ms. Counsel?
Okay. Item, Unfinished Business, Action Requested, 8.1, Revision Approval, Policy BEDB, Board Agenda. Board, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
And so are we voting now to approve the way that it is written?
You can make the motion to approve the agenda, or the policy BEDB as presented.
No, this is the second reading.
Okay.
This is the second reading, that's what I thought.
Yes, it's the second reading. We, the second reading, we have two readings.
Right.
So today would be the day when it says action request, should you make a motion to, either to adopt it or not, or to, you can amend it too.
Right. So there was discussion about the amendment. I just want to be, say here, you know, I know there's some discussion about...
Let's make a motion, and then we can discuss.
Yes. Okay, sorry. I want to move to discuss this.
No, your motion would be either to approve it or not approve it.
I want to make a motion to not approve it at this moment. I want to make a motion to not approve it at this moment.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Mrs. Nash not to approve the revision approval of BEDB. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, sorry. I want to make a motion to approve it. So that we can discuss it.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Mrs. Nash to approve the policy as presented, BEDB, and seconded by Dr. Scott. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mrs. McFadden. Forgive me. Okay. So... Board, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
So I want just to say that one of the reasons this came about, some things I can't say here in public, but one of the reasons this came about and why we are, I would like to see this policy change is because, one, I do think we do need some, having a, having the chair or secretary involved, or some, another chairperson involved in the process of, of creating the agenda is helpful, both for the reason of having input from other board members. I don't think that anyone has had a pet project, but it also helps remember what things are there. And as board secretary, having attended agenda meeting, it was also help for me, helpful for me to understand the process so that other board members can also understand that process as well. And I would love for them to have that, that opportunity to understand that process, because also when they have that opportunity to understand the process, then we don't have a whole lot of things going on the agenda, because we know all the work it takes to put the agenda together, as well as I think it's an opportunity for us to grow as leaders, because, and empower each one of us when somebody is not out. I mean, as you saw, we had a complete change of board members, and all of us came in new. And so there's a lot of learning curve that we did not have. And so a policy, making this policy change allows us, now there may be some revisions that you guys may want to add, but making this policy is to empower other board members to be leaders. And at the time that it arises, should it arise that there is someone who needs to be in that position, then they will know what to do. As of right now, that is not the case. And so we're still learning, and I thank everybody for your patience, but that, me going to the agenda meeting and learning that process definitely helped me get a better understanding, as well as being able to say, hey, yes, Madam Chair, here's the, here are the things that we discussed.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Board members, other board members, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I just wanted to know, I see that the policy here, and as it's written, but if there is a process of creating the list, I know we had a workshop where someone, where Mr., oh gosh, his last name, it's Nate, where he worked with us in creating our things of priority. And so I was interested in us talking about the process of, of how that is put together, and putting things of priority for a right now list, and then another list of in the future. And I'm not sure if it would be something that's put in policy, or if it's just a practice that we can discuss between the superintendent and the officers. So that's one reason why I wanted us to discuss it at a work session.
So you, basically, what you're saying is you want to delay the approval so that there can be more discussion on how to prioritize. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any, Mrs. McFadden?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but we have had this for several meetings. We have had ample time to go through this. And this is not like it's brand new. I've been asking for it for over a year. Ms. Agostini and Dr. Scott have been asking for it for over a year. It's finally here to table it to an undisclosed date and time. It's not, in my opinion, very appropriate, because we'll still have meetings where we're not getting certain things on the agenda that board members want. I think the rotation of it all, when someone can't be there, or allowing other board members to be able to have a time at the meeting, is very appropriate. Now, not everyone's going to get everything on there that they want, and we have to understand that. But there's an opportunity other than just two people, the board chair and the superintendent, making these decisions for a board meeting. There needs to be more board input at what goes on the board agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Any other board members comment?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I just wanted to state that I understand that we have board members who have been here longer than four of us here. And, and that's okay, but we have a process of having two readings for a reason. And I think having adequate time to reflect, to research, to look at other districts and how they have policies in place, I feel like that's, that's the purpose of having two readings. So I don't want us to speak as though us wanting to make edits is a bad thing, because it's there for, for a reason. So I don't want anyone to feel guilty or feel like they've done something wrong by wanting to discuss an item that we're supposed to be voting on. That's the whole purpose of us coming here and voting on policies.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Any other board discussion? And I'll just conclude. With the policy as it's presented right here, this will not be something that I'll support. I totally agree and have for, for years wanted a change in policy. One of the things that I think fails in this policy is if it's not a board member, or, excuse me, an officer, when do they come and who notifies that person to come, come to the meeting? As the board chair, that's not something I'm interested in keeping track of. And I do think that that eliminates, or, you know, takes away the thoughts of, you know, four of my colleagues, if it's just, for the most part, board officers being there, or the preference of the day. Also, concerns with some of the grammatical when we're reading it, rotating board member in the absence of either, when there are three people, so the word should be any. And they also, my final comment is that the board chair is supposed to be contacting those whose items do or do not get on the board agenda. And that is, this has become a full-time job for me, and that's just simply something that I don't want to, or am not interested in doing. So with that being said, I am not able to support that. Board members, any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think part of that was in the discussion of changing that, and I think, I don't know if this is the last one that we had, it may be, but I thought that we had made a few of those changes as possibilities of it saying that we had a board secretary that is employed by the district that would be doing that. And those were some of the suggestions that you had previously made.
That is not how the policy reads. That you have made, yeah, it says the board chair will provide an explanation. So you've made a motion to approve the policy as presented, and it says in this policy that the board chair will be the one doing the explanation.
And that may be my mistake, because I thought we could discuss it, because I do, we, these were the suggestions that we had that were after that. So my apologies, I'm still learning Robert's Rules of Order. I have no problem saying that. So, but with the policy, you know, with asking for suggestions for this, those were the suggestions that were given. I have no problem adding any of those suggestions. And we also discussed these in the last meeting about having those discussions, those, adding those things as well. And then we tabled the discussion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I just have comments about the statement about the role of the board chair and it being added responsibility. I just personally feel like that is, there's a stipend for that, and.
I'm sorry?
There's a stipend for being board chair that is different from the rest of us because of the added responsibilities. So that portion of the read, I am not in disagreement with. I actually support that, because that's why the pay is different.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right?
So I have a question.
Mrs. Washington.
So are we still going to be making some changes to this?
No, this, the, the motion has been made for this policy, as you see on your computer, for, you can make, you can make a motion to amend the policy, but the motion has been made right now to approve the policy as presented.
I would like to make a motion to amend the policy. Do we need to vote on the first one?
No. So what you'll do is, what you're doing is a secondary motion. So you'll make a secondary motion.
To amend the policy.
Okay, now you need to be specific. How do you want to amend it?
Got it. Already have it covered. Okay. The portion, sorry ladies, hopefully, you know, we'll be able to get this together. Can you hear me okay, Gus? Can you hear me, Gus? Okay. Okay, sorry, I'm speaking as loud as I can. I've got a little bit of frog in my throat. Sorry about that. I want to make sure everybody can hear me. So the portion here where it says the, the board secretary, is that the portion that you were liking to amend? If so, I can, I have it here. So the board agenda is to be set by the board chair. That part is correct. And then all board members will provide items to be prioritized by the board chair and board member in collaboration with the superintendent within four business days, I think is what was suggested by the district prior to upcoming board. Let's see here, I'm trying to, oh, thank you guys, I see it there now. Okay. The member will be notified that the agenda item has been placed on the calendar and when. If a board member's agenda or request item is not added, the board chair, that is the portion where was asked to put, I'm sorry, the board chair and superintendent will provide an explanation. Is that correct? I'm sorry, my glasses are really fogged up. The board, thank you. Okay, sorry. The board chair is where it is. Sorry, I'm trying to get my bearings. My glasses are a little fogged up. Okay. The member will be notified that the agenda item has been placed on the calendar and when. If a board member's agenda request is not added, the board chair and superintendent will provide an explanation as to why the item did not appear on the agenda via email within seven business days. It's the portion there where it says via email, and the request was by the board-employed secretary within seven business days.
So Mrs. Nash, could you just, could we narrow that down to either add or strike?
Okay.
If you can say, like, you know, the first paragraph, fifth line, something like that. Add something or strike something.
Okay, so it's going to be the portion that says, everything that is underlined is correct. The bottom portion where it says, so let me go down, one, two, sorry, one, two, three, four, six. Okay. It's going to be line six where it says, if a board member's agenda request is not added, the board chair and superintendent will provide an explanation as to why the item did not appear on the agenda via email by the board-employed secretary within seven business days.
So what you'd like to do is add and superintendent after the board chair?
Correct. And, and, and board, board-employed secretary will be the person who will provide the agenda, the email within seven business days. Yes. Board-employed secretary. Yes.
So how about?
Special assistant. Thank you.
So if, how about we suggest this? Instead of putting all that in there, what if we just change the board chair to the board assistant?
That's perfectly fine with me.
So add board assistant.
So add board assistant.
Strike chair, add assistant.
Correct.
Is there a second to the secondary motion?
Second.
Was that Mrs. McFadden? Okay, so a motion has been made by Mrs. Nash to strike the word chair and add assistant, and it's been seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I just have a question. If we're modifying this tonight, does this constitute, tonight will be a first reading then for a new?
No, this will still be the second reading.
Still be second, right.
Yes. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
Would, would this still, would we still be allowed to talk about the process behind this portion and move forward with the way it is now, to talk about the process later?
Well, and again, I agree with you. That's part of the problem with the way this is written. There's no, it doesn't state who you submit the information to. That's another issue of mine. But no, if it passes the way that it is, this is, this will be the policy, and this is how the board will operate in terms of getting item, agendas on the item. Excuse me, items on the agenda. Okay, so can we vote on the secondary motion first? Mrs. Nash, can you please verify?
That is correct.
Okay. Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, one no, or, excuse me, six yes, one no. The motion carries. I'm sorry, did I hear somebody say something?
Oh, never mind. We have another vote for this coming after this.
Right, we'll go back to the main motion now. Okay, so back to the main motion, which will be to approve policy BEDB with the one change we just made. Is there any other discussion? There's no discussion. Board, please vote. And the, the motion fails there. Hold it. And the motion fails there. It's three yes and four no. So we move on to item, and what that means is basically we will continue on with the policy as is. And we can put it on a workshop later, all right, so we can have a more thorough discussion. All right.
Madam Chair, I just want to be clear. So right now, the only two people who are going to be making the agenda are still you and the superintendent.
As the policy stands right now.
Thank you.
That is correct. All right, thank you. Item 8.2, revision approval, policy BEDN, board members' use of district-owned portable devices. This is action requested. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the revision to policy BEDN, board members' use of district-owned portable devices.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Board members, any discussion? There's no discussion. And the motion is correct. Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Item 9, Unfinished Business, No Action Requested. 9.1, Update Strategic Plan. Mrs. Gregory.
Hi. Thank you, Ms. Agostini. We have an update on the strategic plan. This is actually the strategic planning process. And presenting this will be Dr. Marshall and Franklin, our Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Madam Chair, members of the Board. Tonight I will provide you an update on the process the district has been using to develop its strategic plan that will go from 2023 to 2028. An organization's strategic plan guides its work with our core business being students. You will see pictures of students threaded in this presentation. Please note that the information on slides 2 through 14 has been shared with the Board in previous written updates. Those slides are largely included in the presentation for the sake of the public. So I will do my best to sprint through those. Here you see the steps in the process that have been completed, which are noted by a checkmark. We are utilizing an external specialist to guide us through this process as an effort to make the process objective and streamlined. Of course, the checkmarks, again, indicate work that has already been completed. The last two entries on this slide indicate where we are now. In January, we began drafting a theory of action, which I will explain more about a little bit later. And then in February through April is when we will get to the meat of the strategic plan, where we're developing goals and specific strategies. The larger strategic plan team consists of six smaller teams or committees, each having a different and specific role. The names of team members and their respective roles are included in the coming slides to acknowledge their work and also to demonstrate the diverse perspectives represented on the teams. There are no names on this slide for our student advisory group, but please note that the student advisory group consists of a student representative from each school, and the group as a whole is representative of the district's demographics. So, for example, we have students of varying ability and achievement levels, socioeconomic status levels. We have student leaders represented in the group, as well as students whose first leadership experience has been being a part of this group and representing their school. The initial step in the strategic planning process was to analyze data from the '21-'22 school year to determine our strengths and our opportunities for growth. The dataset used in the analysis included academic data, attendance data, and behavioral data. And you will see the strengths and opportunities for growth on the screen. So you recall a couple of slides back where I've indicated that our student advisory group consists of a student from each of our schools. This group provided very insightful feedback that has been referenced throughout the strategic planning process. It was a very candid group that held nothing back and shared with us things that they would like to see more of and less of in their student experience in Richland School District 2. Listening and Learning. So this process is by far the most student-centered strategic planning process I've experienced. Most strategic plan processes begin with an analysis of some sort of the organization's strengths and weaknesses, often referred to as SWAT. The difference in this strategic planning process is the probes are all student-centered. And you'll see the probes in the gray box on the screen. Listening and Learning consisted of focus groups meetings with select teachers, classified employees, parents, and students. However, all employees and parents had the opportunity to provide responses to these three probes via an electronic survey. And in the next three slides, you'll see the top five responses for each of the three probes from employees, parents, and students. Okay, I'll slow down here because this begins new information to the Board. And so based on all the information that has been gathered from our previous year's data, our employees, our parents, and students, the strategic plan team crafted a vision for the student experience in Richland 2. And so we want our students to be able to say this about their experience in Richland 2. "I am connected. I am engaged. I am supported. I am achieving." Here we've begun crafting our core values. And so our core values would be pieces that need to be in place and practiced in order for our students to have an experience in which they are connected, engaged, supported, and achieving. And again, I emphasize that this is a draft because the core values, of course, would be a component of the strategic plan that the Board will have an opportunity to have input in. But here's a start of where the Strategic Plan Committee has started. The Theory of Action. The Theory of Action is an approach to define the roles and responsibilities of adults in ensuring an optimal experience for students. And so, you know, typically we read from left to right, but we follow this particular document from right to left, beginning with whom? The students. You can start here, just begin with the students. Okay. And so, I want to go through an example with you. And so for students to feel connected, engaged, supported, and achieving, this document traces it back to what do we need teachers to do in order for that to happen? And then whatever is on the teacher list, then what do we need principals to do? And based on what's on the principal list, what do we need district office folks to do? And then based on that list, what do we need the school board to do? And so I'll give you an example. One of the statements under the student experience is, "I am achieving." Well, one of the ways that a third through fifth grade student demonstrates achievement is through his or her performance on SC Ready. And so, under the teacher category, perhaps, you would see something like, "Teach to the intent of the standard." That's the teacher's role in ensuring that the student is achieving. And then for teachers to be able to teach to the intent of the standard, principals would provide professional development and support to teachers. And then the district office would allocate resources. In that last column where the Board is involved as policymakers and public officials, we had this discussion briefly, I believe, at one of the December meetings where we talked about the difference that we see in our students' achievement scores when they do a paper pencil assessment versus an electronic assessment for SC Ready. And so the state regulation requires districts to administer the test electronically. But each year, districts, and us being one of them, submits a waiver to ask for forgiveness from electronic testing and to allow our students to take the test via paper and pencil. And so here's an example of where the school board can support student achievement is by advocating for the continuation of the paper testing option. I believe it was Mrs. Porter and Dr. Scott that mentioned in December that we're often warned that that option to do paper and pencil is going to come to an end. And so if we know that paper pencil testing helps our students demonstrate their achievement better than electronic testing, then that's a role that the school board can play in this theory of action to help student achievement or to demonstrate their achievement. So what's to come next? Our Board. You will complete the Board column of the Theory of Action. And so between now and when the Board meets with Dr. Campbell, our consultant, the teacher column will be filled in, the principal column, and the district office column. And then in your session, you will have the opportunity to fill in the Board column of the Theory of Action. You will also contribute to the vision statement for the district as well as the core values. Even though we have a draft, a preliminary draft of core values, you'll contribute to that portion of it as well. And then the strategic plan team will begin working on developing the SMART goals of the strategic plan. And those goals will be in four areas. One, belonging. Two, early learning. Three, mastery of standards. And four, college and career readiness. Madam Chair, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Franklin. Mrs. McFadden, since you had requested this to be put on the agenda, would you like to start off with questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dr. Scott, is the strategic plan, is it a nationally mandated plan?
Strategic plan is mandated by the state.
So that's for the state of South Carolina?
Correct. We require... The district has a strategic plan, and then each school then from that strategic plan develops a school renewal plan. So there is one strategic plan. It's for the whole district, and schools have school renewal plans.
Is there another term for the renewal plan?
Not to my knowledge. Let me look at my counterpart.
Okay. So, just for clarification, I'm trying to understand, where does the SIC report come in at?
Now, the SIC report is provided annually at the end of the year. And there are components that are required to be reported in it. The major part of it is reporting on your school academic progress.
Now, is that state mandated or is that South Carolina? I mean, I'm sorry, is that nationally mandated or South Carolina?
It's state mandated.
So it's not federally mandated?
Not to my knowledge.
So what programs do we have in place that where the national associations get their information for us? I know that Patrick Kelly did a report to the House, and I'm just curious to know how do our testing and our scores end up on that national database?
And I'm going to yield to our accountability expert to provide an explanation.
Thank you.
Dr. Jennifer Coleman is Executive Director of Accountability Research and Evaluation. She will answer your question.
Good evening. I believe what you're referencing when Mr. Kelly spoke in front of one of the committees last week, he was referring to what they call the nation's report card. That is a national metric which uses the NAEP scores. It's the National Assessment of Educational Progress. NAEP is only administered in grades four, eight, and 12 in multiple subject areas, but not all kids take it in every district. There's a random sampling that happens every two years, and they'll call us and say, "These are the schools that have been picked in Richland 2. You have to administer this subject to fourth grade, this subject to eighth grade." We actually do not get those scores back. We get no student scores, no district scores, no school scores. Only the state gets overall state scores. And that's... I believe that's what you're referencing when they talk about the nation's report card. We only have one national metric that's mandatory across all states, and it's NAEP. And so that's how they can do state-to-state comparisons.
Okay, thank you. So that gives me some clarity. So what is... We got some emails about school designations. Where does that fit in with what you're talking about with NAEP, with SIC, with the strategic plan? What does that whole picture look like?
Sure. So, NAEP and the nation's report card is completely separate. So just move that into its own bubble over... Excuse me, Dr. Franklin, into its own bubble over here. The school designations that were released technically Monday, but the press release came out today from the State Department revolve around how our schools scored on the state report card. That's our state-leveld metric. Now, in line with your last questions, it is federally mandated that every state have an accountability system which results in some sort of state report card. And I'm not sure that's what every state calls it, but every state must provide a metric or a rating for every one of their schools based on their state assessments. And the federal government does give certain regulations that we have to follow for that. The results of the state report card, which were released in November, that is what these school designations have come from, that we, I believe, were shared with you all on Monday or maybe even, yes, Monday. So that is a little bit different than NAEP and the national.
So you said it comes from our state report card, correct? So where does the information... How does the information from this district get to the state report card? Like, where does that happen? So something happens here that goes to the state, that goes to national. Where is it right here? That's what I'm interested in, if you don't mind.
So depending on which level we're talking about, whether we're talking about elementary, middle, or high school, it's going to be a different collaboration of items. So it's SC Ready, ELA in math, so that's three through eight. It's the End of Course Assessment Program. So that's Algebra I, English II, US History, Biology. It includes the graduation rate for high schools. It includes CCR for high schools. That's College and Career Ready. It includes the school climate survey that's administered to parents, staff, and students in our school. So it's a complex formula, but they take all of those little pieces and put them together to give the schools an overall rating and score. They also score subgroups. Federal law requires us to measure predetermined subgroups in every state across the nation. And as you could see from the designation list that went out, it was one subgroup that we most were recognized for needing some improvement, and that would be our special education subgroup.
Okay, so just to be clear, what we got today was a school improvement... What was the other word? It's school improvement. It came... I can't...
School Improvement Designation.
Right, School Improvement Designation. So you're saying that that information came from the school report card?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't we... And I'm just trying to be clear. From each school, the SIC report, isn't that what we provide to the state for the school improvement plan?
Yes.
Yes, I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay.
Because we have the South Carolina School Improvement Council. So every school has to have, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to be clear, every school has to have a school report card. That school report card goes to the South Carolina School Improvement Council.
Madam Chair. The state report card is assigned... The ratings are assigned from the State Department of Education based on our metrics. My experience on being on SIC for my kids was we would review that data with the school admin and provide support for school admin based on areas that may have been identified as need on the school's state report card.
But that school report goes to the SIC, the South Carolina SIC, and that's how we get our information that goes to the school improvement designation to determine whether or not our schools are legit and what we need to be doing.
The state report card ratings?
Yes, for the school improvement plan.
Yes, they go to everybody. They've been on the website since November 11.
So you're saying that that information from our school report cards go to the School Improvement Council that's uploaded to our national database?
There is no national database.
Well, so that's what I want to know. I want to know.
Mrs. Porter.
I just want to help. So, the school improvement plan, when they submit that, they're reporting on the school. So the school is giving them the... So that everyone... So that one person isn't responsible for creating it for the entire district. Each school has an SIC. They create an overall plan that gives you some of the logistics, like number of students, how they rate it on test scores, and things like that. That's something that we can't change. It's factual information. So the SIC works together to create that report, to submit it. It doesn't affect how our districts and schools are rated on the school report card. That's from factual information and data like test scores and things like that. So there's nothing that the SIC can do to where it would hurt the report card because they're just creating a report that is used as a report, but they're giving factual information.
I understand that. But during the year, the report is created based on the goals of the school. So the school sets goals, and then throughout the year, they're monitoring those goals based on the district plan. So the district plan starts here. The schools have their goals here that they want to do based on, if you looked at the strategic plan, environment, grades, demographics, food, all those things, teacher satisfaction. So the schools make their strategic plans and what they want to do for the school report card based on this district plan. From each school, at the end of the year, they gather all their information. They submit it to the South Carolina School Improvement Council. From there, the state, the national government, gets their information from those at the very bottom. Am I not correct in how that is played out? Or am I confused? Because if that's not true, then I want to know, how is the nation getting their information about our school? What documents are they using and how are they getting that information? Whether it's pulled or not?
I think we're using the term "school report card" interchangeably. And so there is a school report card that we don't create. It comes to us from the State Department of Education. We log into the system and we see it. And then there's also the annual report to parents. That is what the SIC creates. So they're separate documents. And the annual report to parents is based on... So you report your data from your school report card?
It's more of a communication process, and what Dr. Coleman is describing is the state's accountability system. And what you're referencing with Mr. Patrick Kelly, I spoke with Mr. Kelly today, and he shared what he had shared earlier. It was on Monday afternoon at the South Carolina Ed... that the South Carolina Education Oversight Committee met and discussed how students did on the national report card, also known as NAEP. And then Dr. Coleman explained, twice a year, selected fourth and eighth graders take part in that national exam. And I think in our district, you said there were seven schools maybe that participated, and we do not get those results. And so that...
So on every school that...
We're going to give other board members an opportunity to speak now. Are there any other board members that have questions or comments?
Okay, yes, ma'am. So on every school that you pull up, there's three, four things, actually. There's a visit our site, an annual report, a school improvement plan, and a school report card. So I'm just trying to find the link to which one of these reports are we giving to the national school report card? For what, and I understand there's two different ones.
Yes, ma'am.
But if Mr. Kelly did a fantastic job, but if he's able to go up there and represent us as a board, we need to have clarity on what he's talking about. So when we hear it, we're not sitting here like, wonder which one it is. We can have emphatical evidence to say, okay, this is the report that he's talking about. This is where, and I need you guys as experts to help me out, to figure out where these three are and how it applies to national level.
The nation's report card is solely how the states do on NAEP testing in fourth and eighth grade. That's it. And that's how, during Mr. Kelly's presentation, he was able to say how South Carolina may rank next to Utah, because the kids in Utah took NAEP as well. That's all the nation's report card is, are the actual scores from the NAEP assessment.
Are we okay to move on? Or perhaps you can call?
I think we're having a strategic planning meeting.
We are, March 10. So then...
So if you guys wouldn't mind to come, and, because I want to do a deep dive into these, because, one, it's an interest and a passion of mine to see where our kids are, not just in South Carolina, but nationally. So I would like to make a request that, you know, we're able to deep dive into each one of these to try to figure out how this strategic plan goes with our schools and the reports that are given, that are seen every school. If y'all don't mind, thank you so much for your time and for being here. I appreciate that. Y'all weren't supposed to, but I thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Mrs. Gregory.
Right. Thank you. We have next, Revision Proposal Policy BEDGA Board Records, and Dr. Franklin again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory again, Madam Chair, members of the board. At the previous board meeting, the board had a review of policy BEDGA board records. The draft that you see before you reflects the conversation of the board. And so what you see underlined in the first paragraph represents an insertion that the board chose to insert, to include in the policy. And then in the second paragraph, what you see in blue text there is a recommendation from district administration. It just mirrors what the board did in the first paragraph.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Mrs. Nash, do you have any questions or comments? I believe you asked for this to be on the agenda. No?
No.
Oh, okay. Board members, questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
So I looked at this policy, and I've received lots of emails and phone calls, actually, from individuals who are concerned about the types of records that a board member would want to review of staff. And I just want clarification on that for those who have spoken to me personally. And then also, I want to express that I'd like legal counsel to give us advice on this policy change, because I don't want it to be something that's used against us in the future, being that our only employee is a superintendent and not the rest of the staff. And I just feel very uncomfortable, I'm sorry, I feel very uncomfortable with us having access to records of staff members when our only employee is a superintendent.
And so this policy is specific to information that's available under FOIA.
Okay.
And so what this policy does is it expedites the amount of
I'm sorry.
time by which a board member will receive that information, as opposed to a member of the general public. So it really doesn't give the board member access to any information that wouldn't already be available via FOIA.
So the copies of records being made by the individual board member does not have to do with personal records of staff members?
Right, anything that is FOIable. So if it's a document that's requested that isn't covered under FOIA, it does not fall under this policy.
Okay. What about items that are sent to us to discuss in executive session that we're talking about in an executive session? That means somebody from the public can have access to those letters and so forth?
No, only if it's a document that is otherwise available under FOIA. So if it's not a document that would be available under FOIA, it's not covered in this policy. It's not addressed by this policy.
Okay, because those items are emailed to us, and so that's why I ask.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead. Yes, Mrs. Nash.
So it would be, all of this is based on FOIA. So if, you know, and if the public, I mean, we're all learning about FOIA as well, but that's definitely something to be familiar with. But part of the reason is, for this policy change, is so that we can address things like teacher retention and figuring out ways to help, but knowing those reports as far as things that are FOIable for any person. Any person in the public can FOIA the same information we can't. It just allows us to be able to get this information beforehand. As of right now, that is not the case. Before, prior, it said it had no date whatsoever. So you could say, hey, I would like to know, you know, where we are on a particular, I don't want to say anything specific, but on a particular matter, as it relates to, you know, maybe teacher pay, or, you know, and not specific teachers, but what are the metrics of, you know, are they getting paid? How do we assess that? What kind of pay raise they get? You can't do that if we just, it had no metrics whatsoever. It had, whenever possible. So if we wanted to know that, and we say we want to sit here and plan and figure out what we're going to put together for some sort of stipend or raise for teachers, we couldn't do that without having that information. So this allows us to get that information faster than we otherwise would. But any person can, what this says is basically that the board can get this in a shorter amount of time, because with FOIA, I believe, is it 60, it's 30 days, and then you have 30 days to respond? Is that correct? It's a total of 60 days, and you can respond on the 59th day? So by the time the 59th day comes, and there's pertinent information, we as a board need to make decisions, we wouldn't be able to get that information.
Okay, so the only thing that this, and I'm restating this for those who have contacted me, because that is a true invalid concern of others who may not have contacted you. So this is specifically to address the timeframe in which FOIA would get information to you. And so this would require a staff member within Richland, too, to get that information faster for us?
The staff member would get the information within 10 business days.
To the board.
Correct.
And Madam Chair, if I may?
Mrs. Nash.
And it says that right there at the bottom, individual board members may request information as a member of the general public in accordance with provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, which is FOIA. So that information is there for them to read, that that is anything that is FOIA, nothing else.
Madam Chair. Mr. Trapp.
I hate to be negative here, but technically, the way I read this, especially with the first paragraph, and I'm not trying to say that we need to change it, but the first paragraph seems to place a lot of restrictions on the board members. And then the third paragraph does not, in other words, I don't see anywhere in here that it guarantees the information requested, and the first paragraph is restricted to Freedom of Information Act information. It would appear to me, reading this, that the third paragraph simply adds to the other two paragraphs, that if we are not content with the, what we're getting from the administration, that we can, as an individual, invoke the Freedom of Information Act to receive information. I don't see that it restricts the information available to us in the first two paragraphs to that Freedom of Information Act information. If that's what it is intended, I think that needs to be modified, and that language needs to be changed to reflect that. I just don't see it reading quite the way we're, anyway, that's just my thoughts on it.
Mrs. McFadden.
Madam Chair, I agree, because I was told that it would be 45 to 50 days before I would get certain information. And they were asked, could you please wait for your information? We've got other things to do, that kind of thing. So at what point do we, as board members, are we able to get the information, knowing that we have certain things that we're about to talk about, but we're being told it's going to be 45 days before you get this? Well, I need to know that information, because we're supposed to be talking about it in 30 days. Me getting that information 45 days defeats the purpose, because I need it before that meeting comes up. So I don't see where it said, it says within 10 business days, but there should be a cutoff that says, you know, you can definitely have it by this date. We're going to make sure. And I understand the volume and the size and things like that. But if we're requesting something, you know, if February, I think April is a little bit too long. I mean, that's even before I can FOIA it myself, you know? But I'd have to, you know, and I just feel like the request that I wait for 60 days before I receive certain information was really absurd. So I would like to see something in here that says, we're going to make an effort to get you this, you know, what's a better date for you? If I can't get it in 10 days, what about 20 days, you know? But again, we could FOIA it, for that matter, and have it faster. And I'm not sure, but it seems like the underlying part in the first paragraph and the underlying part in the second paragraph are actually kind of the same thing. I don't know how we could make that not. And is there information that the board is privy to that the public is not privy to that we could request?
No, I'm just asking because
Point of order.
We get information for, like, student appeals and things like that. So I'm just curious, is there certain information that's not FOIated? Because if we do this, we're saying that the only information we can get through this process is if it's FOIA information. Are there, and I'm just curious?
The information, excuse me, I'm sorry, that you're supposed to be able to obtain as a board member falls in line with your roles and responsibilities as a board member, as in board governance. That should be the information that you should be able to request. Again, I'm not a fan of this policy, never have been, because, no, I want no policy. And the policy is, if it's within our scope, as a board member, we should be able to request it from the district office and receive the information. And this goes back to 2020, when I requested information, an email as to how the money was being distributed when we gave our first teacher bonuses, the classroom money supplies, and all of that. I was told in the meeting that the money did not need to be spent by the end of June 2020. Well, the communication that went out to the employees was, in fact, it did. And so when I requested that memo, I was overstepping my bounds as a board member, and thus, we were introduced with this policy BEDGA. So again, personally, if it falls within our scope and the board member requests for the information, I believe that we should get it. There's only one other district that I'm aware of, and that's Lexington, Richland, five, that actually has this policy. Very few districts actually have a policy, and in fact, some of them are basically, you know, if a board member requests information, the doors are open, come on in, and we'll get it for you. But, and it's not personnel information, personnel files. There are restrictions in terms of what is considered board governance. Should, the board should have access to the information. Mrs. Porter.
I just wanted to know if Dr. Franklin could include the line, like what Mr. Trapp mentioned, that the information would only be information that is available through FOIA?
Well, I would ask this, because tonight, we had a situation where there was information that we needed that wasn't supplied to us. If after this meeting, one of us wanted to go and say, well, I would like certain records concerning this case that we had in executive session, is that within our realm? Because that is not information that's going to be available to the public. But I feel like this is saying that we can only get FOIA information, but there's certain information that we needed tonight, that if tomorrow we wanted to request that, I guess it would be irrelevant, because we already voted on it, but it would be information that we would need, per se, before the meeting. Would we be able to do that?
If I may, that information should be requested, like, prior to executive session and given it to you in your board docs in the executive session. So, no, it wouldn't be FOIA'd. That would be personnel information pertaining to, you know, an employee that we're discussing.
Would I be able to get that information? Because if I get it on Thursday, and I want information, you know, how does that work?
We'll have to check with legal counsel on that.
Madam Chair.
Port.
I also don't think that we should be requesting information on anything after it's been decided upon in an executive session.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I said before.
Yeah, I think she's just making, she doesn't really want it. I mean, that's my understanding. She was saying it would have been nice to have prior to executive session.
So, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
So can we go ahead, and Dr. Franklin said it would be the pleasure of the board to include the line about making sure that it's FOIable information?
Sure.
What needs to happen?
You need to make a motion to tell us where you would like to insert that.
Okay, I'd like to move that we add in the first paragraph, under normal circumstances, request to inspect or receive copies of records, no, excuse me, only FOIable information, only FOIable information that... Okay, only information provided by the Freedom of Information Act, along with a rationale for the request. To the superintendent may refer such request to the Communications Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? So this is the first reading. Do we need to take a...
If it's permissible, if we would allow district administration to go back and wordsmith and then bring the policy back?
Is that all right with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on BEDGA? Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Item 9.3, Policy Review, Policy DBJ, Budget Transfers. Mrs. Gregory.
Ms. Agostini, we have Dr. Harry Miley, Senior Chief Finance, Senior Chief for Finance and Operations on Budget Transfers.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate you all letting me gather a little information. The last time we discussed this, I put together for tonight some samples of other districts. What I would, I can provide more information, but at, right now, I'm not sure of what the issue is. I think the district has had excellent credit ratings. We've had excellent audits. The IG didn't see anything in our operations as far as that's concerned. We've had fund balances. We've had surpluses since I've been here. So we can provide more information, but I wanted to provide this. First of all, as you can see from this, and you had this information, you can see that it's all over the place. I mean, and I didn't take every district in the state. I don't really, I know we could compare ourselves to much smaller districts. I think the operations of a small district are completely different than some district our size. But I collected some. There are others. I just picked them that I thought, one, we all know about. They're either local, that is, Newberry's not as big as we are, but it's a local, it's a nearby neighbor. Berkeley and Charles, as you can see, I don't need to read them to you. But they're, some restrictive, some are very detailed, some are no policy at all practically. So with that, I did want to mention, I have a recommendation. Actually, my first recommendation is that we leave it alone, but I certainly understand your concern of wanting to change something. But we have a very large district, and we have a system, our software system is the only one, I think I mentioned this last time, our software, financial software system is the only one used by our provider in the state. It's something like 80 districts. There are three major systems that are used. Most of them are, 20 or 30 districts use one, 20, 30 districts use the other. We're the only one that uses the current, our system. And it is very un-user friendly. And so... the only one that uses the current, our system. And it is very un-user friendly. And so we spend a lot of time, we have employees that do nothing but help us with that software system. They're not in the finance department. They actually just help us use that system as they help HR. Finance and HR are the ones that actually use the system the most. So you've seen my recommendations. I'll be glad to answer any other questions. I'll be glad to gather some more information. And so I wanted to present this and get your thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Miley. Board members? Mrs. Nash?
Okay, so, you know, again, one of the things, the biggest issues, because I want to make sure that the public hears why this is an issue, is that we are oversight and accountability. And again, it is the, the amount right now that can be done without letting us know is, the number is what, is it 33 million that a budget transfer can be made?
Correct.
Okay.
And we aren't allowed to spend...
For emergencies.
Well, for what, yes, ma'am, for, depending on the reason. For, but we're not allowed, and one of the things that we are, that we do not have the authority to spend more than the budget total dollar amount that you have approved. So the transfer is between line items. The bottom line, we are not allowed, the district is not allowed to spend more than that bottom line.
Board members, further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Trapp?
Yeah, I do have, I want to share some thoughts of what I would like to see in a policy. I believe that we should have, and maybe some of the other school districts have similar policies, but I think that we should have a provision here for emergencies. And you have, I was very impressed with the list of the emergencies. And the dollar amounts in there were very informative. I was talking to a, a major, a major company the other day about the cost of a chiller. And I was surprised at just how expensive chillers, and I don't know how big a chiller we have here in the district too, but some of these chillers can cost, you know, one and a half million dollars. So, of course, it's unusual for something that big to go out and be 100% failure. You don't have to be replaced. I, I'm of the opinion that we should have two provisions in here. One, a very small amount of money that can be transferred just for, for lack of planning or whatever. But emergencies, I think we should have a category for emergencies, and those emergencies should be based on per building emergency. In other words, if you have a roof blown off at a building over here, that should not share money with the building over here that had a boiler blow up. You know, in other words, each building should be, we should have provisions for those buildings to be made inhabitable so that we can have students in there learning. And those things, I think, should be immediate and should not require board approval to make the buildings usable so that our children can be educated. But some of these other things, I think we should have a very small number and then a very, very large number for the emergencies. I mean, I think the top thing over here is $100,000. And I personally think that's a very low number for an emergency. We could have a storm or something come through and cause a building to be very seriously damaged. Anyway, I would like to see a policy, and I would like to, if it'd be appropriate, to possibly write something like that up and submit it with, with conditions of what constitute an emergency and that sort of thing. But I, I think we should have some categories there.
One of the thoughts I had in terms of, when I'm speaking to school board people or...
I have a point of order, please. Point of order.
I heard you.
Thank you. Dr. Miley.
And, and it's hard to grasp how large this district is. I think a lot of people in the community don't quite understand. We have high schools with monthly $35,000 electric bills, $15,000 water bills. Our square footage of 6 million square feet represents about 2,000 homes. That's about, we all live somewhere. We all have water faucets break. We have AC replacements. We have plumbers coming. We have water sewer issues. We have roofs. We have issues with our property. We have 2,000 of those homes in the district, basically. We've got 2,000 AC units or more. We have probably 10,000, I don't know, probably 10,000 toilets and faucets. So it's, it's a big organization. And so that's one of the reasons why we are trusted to make it work and make it run. And so, again, it's your policy, whatever, but it is a big organization. And we like to make sure that we can get things done and pay for them appropriately and on time so that we do have those learning spaces for the children in the schools. So it is a big organization. We have some tremendous people working, organizing it and make it happen. But again, my job is just to make sure the bills get paid and that we have a balanced budget.
Madam Chair?
Dr. Scott?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for Policy DBJ Budget Transfers, that it remain the same except for when we get down to the second line that it says, that it see 10%, that it would say that it does not. Categories that exceed 250,000% of the General Fund will be reported to the board in the quarterly finance reports.
Just to clarify, you said, I think, 250...
250,000.
Okay, not percent. You said percent, but yeah, $250,000 is what you're...
I would just like to remove that see 10% and replace that with 250,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
Where are, are, so with the quarterly financial reports, are we due for those?
You are, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So then my other question is, I guess I really want to see, emergencies are completely, we understand that. You mentioned the last time that there was a other category. Is there any way that you can provide the board with what those other expenses were? You don't have to talk about that now, but is that something you can share in a report?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. McFadden?
I agree with what Dr. Scott's motion, but what I would like to see happen is that before $250,000 is spent, that we're notified. So what this is saying, and help me, Dr. Scott, budgets, budget categories that exceed $250,000 of the General Fund will be reported to us. But I, I would prefer that those that are, that exceed $250,000 come to us first for board approval before it's spent, because that's just like saying, you can spend $350,000 if you want to, and we'll find out later.
Ms. McFadden is stating that they cannot spend over $250,000. Anything over 250 has to come to the board for approval first.
Right, but that's not what the policy says.
That's not what this policy says.
Yes.
It says that it'll be reported to the board in quarterly financial reports. So they're not asking for approval. You, you just asked to change the 10% strike hit and put $250,000.
Well, I mean, I'm confused. I want to make sure I understand. Are we talking about a transfer between categories? Are we talking about an expenditure above $300,000? Is it an expenditure? Because we do that routinely with our construction projects. So I want to make sure I understand.
We're talking about transfers.
Transfers, that's what I...
Not expend, transfers.
I understand, thank you.
So I would like to make an amendment to Dr. Scott's motion, or a secondary motion?
No, did we already vote on her motion?
No.
No, I'm sorry. I, I'm, I'm lost in this conversation. So we're at the transfers, okay, $250,000. Mrs. McFadden, what's your secondary motion?
I would like to amend Dr. Scott's original motion for Policy DBJ Budget Transfer. For the last sentence to say, transfers between major budget categories that exceed $250,000 of the General Fund will be reported to the board for a vote and approval.
Is there a second? And the second was made by, or the, there was a motion made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Any further discussion on the secondary motion? Please, please repeat your motion, Mrs. McFadden.
Yes, ma'am. Transfer between major budget categories that exceed $250,000 of the General Fund will be reported to the board for approval. Yeah, that's fine. Because it'll have to be in the quarterly financial reports anyway. So, yeah. For approval, please. But just for clarity, that approval will have to come through a vote. Is that correct?
Does the board vote without having a board meeting?
And that's a great question. No, the board cannot.
I didn't know whether you could have an electronic board meeting.
No, oh, we absolutely cannot. Did you read the IG report? So, that was supposed to be a little bit of a joke. But, yeah, so we absolutely cannot have an electronic meeting. That would mean that we all have to come together for any vote where there's a transfer of funds over $250,000.
And we would want to make sure that we understand that that might hold up an expenditure, waiting on a, a serious expenditure that might, it could hold up that.
Yes.
So that's, that's, I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Porter?
So could we add a line in there with the exception of...
Okay, so right now, we cannot, because this is a secondary motion. We can see what happens with this motion that she has made, the secondary, then we can go from there.
But can't she have a discussion and explain to us what she would want?
Oh, she, you are correct on that, Mrs. McFadden.
So that we'll know what her...
So she can tell us what she's wishing, but she cannot make another motion until we vote on Mrs. McFadden's motion.
Gotcha. So I'm thinking that should Ms. McFadden's motion fail, that we would resubmit it with an extra line stating that in the event of, and help me out, Dr. Miley, because I think you were getting to this, but...
Emergencies are always unforeseen, but some type of emergency expenditure that was necessary for the continuation of the district's operations, something like that. But again, we don't hope, we hope those don't happen.
Right.
But we have had that happen.
Exactly. So I want to make sure we have a line afterwards that states that we don't want a building to fall apart because we didn't have a meeting. So...
For instance, I, I'd forgotten about this one. Mr. Anderson, I remember it well. The rain that Ridge View's land fell away.
Right.
It wasn't covered by our insurance. And it was around $250,000, I believe, of improvements to, higher than that. So again, I, I don't plan on emergencies.
Right.
What I do want to do is make sure we can do our job in case of an emergency.
So Ms. McFadden, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, well, can I amend my motion?
Madam Chair?
You, Dr. Scott first, please.
Dr. Miley, in your time it's been the CFO, how many emergency situations have we had that we really had to spend over $250,000?
Probably a couple of dozen.
Right. And that's what I'm thinking. On my time here on the board, 10 years, I think that may have happened one or two times.
A year.
So not saying that it can't happen, but I don't want my colleagues to think they have to go on a panic mode based on the information you just shared, because in a decade, it only occurred one or two times.
No, I said a couple of dozen times.
So if we needed to...
I understand that.
So if we needed to have an emergency quick meeting, we can. But, you know, make the decision based on the knowledge that you have. But if you're not clear, then maybe this needs to come back at a different time. But I just don't want people to be in a panic mode when they hear key words when the data doesn't show a whole lot of that.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. Washington?
So, yeah, because I'm looking at examples of emergency expenses, and I'm assuming that these are from our district. I don't see anything right now that you've shown us of something that was over $250,000. And also, I just want to ask, do we not, like, have a category or something that we say, this is, this is some money that we have accounted for in case of emergency? We, we don't...
We don't. We don't have a contingency fund, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Another example was when we had the, the, the sinkhole at Westwood Stadium. We ultimately collected some insurance, but we had to pay over $1.2 million to fix that sinkhole so they could have football parking for their football game. So that, again, that's not a scare tactic. I'm just saying, my job is to make sure those things get done. And as long as there's a provision in the policy that allows us to continue to make our, get our jobs done, I'm okay. I, I don't have an issue, and I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm just trying to make sure we can do our job.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mrs. Porter.
So in an event like what you stated, that decision to, to address took place in about how much time?
The, the sinkhole was identified, probably, it took us six to nine months. We had to hire engineers and investigators to look into it, find out what the problem was, reach out to the construction companies that did it. They didn't want to fix it. We ended up having to sue them. We had to go out on bid and procure the, get estimates for the, for the fix. And then we had to hire those firms, and then they had to fix it. So I'm thinking about, I guess it was, I can't remember exactly, year and a half. But it was a, it was a major issue. And again, we don't have those every day. But I didn't want to face the Westwood crowd and say, I'm sorry, I'm not going to fix your, I need to wait to fix your, your statement. So...
Board members, can we vote on the secondary motion from Mrs. McFadden? Could you please, have you, oh, right.
These are to be incorporated in the next time we bring it back, correct?
Correct. Do you need to change your vote?
No.
And the vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. Now back to our main motion. Well, she, she amended it, but so we have to vote on the amendment to the main motion? And then we vote on the main motion? Well, well, and I understand that she, what you're saying, but that would not how you do it, that would not be how it's done in Robert's rules. What we have to do is vote on the secondary motion first. And then... She did amend. So you vote on amending the main motion. Then you go back to the main motion and vote on that. Then you go back to the main motion and vote on that. So, essentially, what we should have changed was just the wording. Voting, the vote should have been just for, to the board for approval. That's the main motion right there. Okay, so we'll take a vote on the main motion now. And the vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. Is there any further discussion on policy DBJ? Thank you so much, Dr. Miley. Moving on to item 10, new business, no action requested. 10.1, the 2023-2024 budget timeline. Mrs. Gregory.
Yes, Dr. Miley is at the podium and will share the 2023-24 budget timeline.
This is our normal, normal process of outlining the steps required for the budget approval, for the board to approve the budget two readings. I want to caution us all, I don't think, since I've been here only 10 years, we've never been able to keep these dates exactly like they are in January, February. The legislature has usually, has a hand in changing our timeline. And so, just, this is our plan, and we coordinated it with your published board meetings, and so, wanted you to consider it. And when we have any more information from the state, so far, we have not heard much at all. I'll get a timeline from the county on their budget approval process. We'll take our county portion requests to them like we have for the last three or four years. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but again, this is not in stone. I'll buy all lunch if it doesn't change a single date on it.
Board members, questions or comments? Mrs. McFadden.
Dr. Miley, last year, we had a difficult time getting our budget to county council. And I know we had to do a contingency and things like that. But is there a better process or a better date that we can have projections to say? And I know that we had the new funding model last year coming through, so it's been about, it'll be about a year now. Is there any way we can get it to them before their second reading and adjust ours as necessary, depending on the money that they're going to give us? I know we don't, we may not know the exact amount, but so that we're not getting to them after their second reading.
We will try. We try all the time to do that. One of the problems is, they don't like budget amendments, so we don't want to take a number to the county unless we have that number finalized from the county. But we will try. I mean, that's our effort all the time. If, first few years I was here, the legislature would finish up most of their negotiations, and even if they had a conference committee, that conference committee might be not, maybe not until May or June, but the conference committee was a couple of million dollars apart. As you know, last year, it was widely apart. And so, that made it very difficult for us to say, "Okay, let's take this to the county." But we will try. We have already started meetings with county council members and talking to them. The county is, you know, as I've talked to y'all before, the problem with the county is the county has, lumps us with what they call the millage agencies. And that's things like the Airport Commission, Recreation, Riverbank Zoo, and those organizations get all of their funding, not all, maybe 99% of their fundings from that millage rate by the, set by the county. And so, we're lumped in there as a millage agency. And obviously, for what the county approves, it's less than a third of our budget. So, that's the difficult part. It's hard for us to have that full budget together by the time they want it. One of the things we can do, and that's one of the things that we try to get done, and I'm an old economist, I look, there's a supply side of revenues, and there's a demand side for needs. We work on the needs starting now, in terms of enrollment projections, need for new teachers, needs for other things in the district. We won't know what the state is going to mandate in terms of pay raises, any insurance increases and things like that. But on the demand side, we, we work on that even when we're not sure about the revenues. So, we will be doing that.
Board members, any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
Would this fall under the committee with Mr. Trapp?
Mr., yes, if finance, I will say this, I've heard no responses from any board member interested in sitting on the Finance Committee, but yes, it would. So, if anybody's interested, please respond to the email.
This did not include any Finance Committee meetings of which we would amend.
Right, right, but the Finance Committee, the whole board, this is, the whole board's involved on this. Mrs. Washington?
Yes, Madam Chair, with all due respect, if you please just give us some time to just kind of digest some of the emails, we may not respond immediately, but... So, that's just one thing in reference to the Finance Committee. You can definitely add me to it. The second thing is, you meet with county council to talk a lot about this budget process?
Yes, we are included in their discussions. They have multiple meetings. They have, before they start voting, we go in and present what we, we need and what our budget is. Again, it's different with their, their, seven out of the nine agencies are their agencies. And then there's the two school districts, and we're kind of stepchildren in terms of our needs are so different, and our budget funding model is so different than those individual counties. But we do talk to them, and again, that's why we've started talking to county council members one-on-one to make sure they, you know, that they're there when we ready, when we're ready to talk about our budget.
Are you able to let us know when you have some of those discussions? Not that we can attend like every single meeting, but I am very interested in hearing the conversations with county council.
Absolutely.
And then the other thing is, I know that the state, it's a lengthy process. It is probably something that makes you pull your hair out. However, is there a way that you can look at the previous year's budget and be able to say, "This is our starting point, and let's build from there"? Is that how the process works?
That's where we'll start.
Okay.
Again, I've heard nothing about the tweaks that they talked about last fall, about the tweaks to the new funding model.
Okay.
And we're cautiously optimistic.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members' questions? And I'm just going to, my questions sort of are in alignment with my colleagues. In the county council issue, I'm looking at this, and the timeline for us to get our budget done, which is June 27, 2023, I believe is probably a month after county council asked for us. Or actually, that was their final reading, but the first reading. And I'll tell you my predicament, after we had our second reading, or actually, when we had our meeting, our first meeting in June, two days later, county council was having their second reading. And when we met at that first meeting in June and talked about the budget, my takeaway from that conversation was, and from my fellow colleagues, was there was no sense of urgency to get it done, because we'd have it done by the end of June and submitted to county council. Well, the next morning, my phone was buzzing from county council members saying, "Where's your budget? We're having our second reading tomorrow." We've had a workshop, didn't hear anything. We had our first reading, we had the public hearing, and we've heard nothing from your district. So, we're going into the third reading, and then we ask for a millage increase. So, how are we, I really want to know how we are communicating, because with county council, with the chair, in terms of getting the budgets in, because they were calling me, and I said, I took away no sense of urgency, and I went back and listened to the meeting, and they said, you know, that may have been how it operated in the past, but that's not how we're operating now. So, I want to know, you know, what communications we will have with them. I mean, to be open and say, "We can't get it in," because they didn't even hear that from us.
I will take full blame for that last year. I will not make the mistake this year, certainly not going to throw anybody under the bus, but we did communicate with county, with the county. We did not communicate as well with the county council members as we perhaps should have, but we were an easy target, and we were communicating. But we will communicate better this year. We already have started that process, and we will communicate much better. But I will take full blame for anything that went awry last year or for any negative calls you got.
All right, thank you, Dr. Miley. Board members, any further questions? Mrs. Porter?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want us to just be mindful of referring to the past in our conversations. I don't want it to cause any confusion or complications legally when it comes to past.
I'm talking about board colleagues, but thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Thank you.
All right, agenda items from the next meeting. 11.1, draft agenda items for the February 28, 2023 meeting.
And the draft agenda, we have called order, approval agenda, and an executive session. We'll have student admission requests from adult ed, student appeals, breach of contracts, employment recommendations, and certified releases. For our inspirational moment, our pledge of allegiance, we look forward to having Bethel Hanbury Elementary students here. And on our consent agenda, the approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from the previous meeting, classified employment releases, and in-district transfers. Our first public participation, and then we'll vote on the executive session items. Under unfinished business, action requested, the revision, approval, policy, BEDGA, board records. And unfinished business, no action requested, the revision of the proposal, budget transfers, committee report, the SIG recommendations. Under new business, no action requested, we'll have our second quarter pupil services report, Mr. Smith, and a legislative update. And then, again, agenda items for the next meeting, we'll have the draft agenda items, second public participation if needed, and as usual, the board and superintendent comments. Executive session continued if needed, voting on those items, and then adjournment.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Board members, is there anything additional that you would like to see on the next meeting or future agendas?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I'd like for us to somehow move this to an item of priority, to reduce the amount of time needed before giving an offer of employment as close to onsite as possible. I think during this time is the time where staff members are making a decision or looking at contracts and letters of intent. And so, I think it's important that we change that policy so that there isn't a long amount of time before someone has an approval to give a job offer to someone.
So, you're looking to change the policy?
Yes.
Okay, do you know what policy it is?
I don't at this time.
Okay, so if you could get back with us regarding the policy, that would be very helpful.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I've already sent that policy a few weeks ago about that.
All right, thank you. Any other board members? Mrs. Washington?
I really would like for us to have the discussion of the bonuses. You know, what is that going to look like? I know that's going to require us to know how much money and funds are available, but I really would like for us to move forward with that process. I know Dr. Scott mentioned it twice, and I am in agreements, in agreeance with her that we need to go ahead and make a decision on what that's going to look like.
All right, that could be a question when we have a budget update. I know that there are difference, differing opinions on that. For example, I'm interested more in recruiting and retention bonus versus a bonus, but that is, we can have a discussion on that regarding bonuses. Any other board members?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Mrs. Porter.
So, for items that would require budget approval and things like that, if we have things that we're interested in submitting, we can just send that to, directly to the committee? It's not something that needs to be stated here. Is that correct?
Okay, I'm not sure that I'm following.
For example, if we want to ensure that a line item is included for retention bonuses, is that something specific to state here, or is that something that you would submit to the Finance Committee?
Well, I think, actually, when we get the Finance Committee up and going, that could be something that the Finance Committee could research and then make a recommendation to the board.
Okay.
Mrs. McFadden.
I would like to place somewhere a workshop for policy BEDB board agenda. It was not approved today. And again, we're sitting in a position that we've been sitting in with the superintendent and the board chair making the decisions on the agenda. So, I would like to find some time to have a workshop within a meeting or something to where we can actually have more people that are involved with the agenda, because this was a concern and has been a concern. And unfortunately, it didn't get anywhere, but I'd like to take you up on that offer to have a workshop sometime soon.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else, board members? All right, moving on to item 12, public participation two, we have no one signed up. Moving on to item 13, board and superintendent comments, 13.1. All right, we will start with Mrs. McFadden.
Thank you all for your reports, for the strategic plan. Ms. Coleman, thank you so much for your explanation, and Dr. Franklin, I appreciate it. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mr. Trapp?
I'd just like to thank everyone that helped us here tonight and for the public participants as well, and for all the staff that's here. We appreciate you being here and being a part of the meeting. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Mrs. Washington?
Yes, I want to say thank you to everyone who attended our meeting tonight, in-house and online. Counselor, it was National Counseling Week last week, so I definitely want to say thank you to all of our school counselors for their support for our students and to our wonderful bus drivers for all that they do to make sure that our students start their days off on the right foot. And thank you to every school that has worked diligently during the month of Black History, or during February, to highlight the achievements of Black Americans. Thank you to the schools that have invited us to participate in your various initiatives, and I'm really excited for our, the way that we're ending this month with our annual Black History Honorary Recognition Program on the 27th. Thank you again, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I just want to second that sentiment with all of the initiatives for Black History Month. I appreciated them. I also appreciate Center for Achievement, Bethel Hanbury Elementary, for having me at your schools, and Mr. KJ Kearney came out and spoke to many of our culinary students from our high schools, and I thought that was an excellent program. I really appreciated that as well. And thank you to Ms. Boykin, who shared with the inspirational moment earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Nash?
Well, I want to say thank you to everybody that's in this room for being here tonight on Valentine's Day. And I want to say I appreciate you guys, and I hope that your honeys, wherever they are, appreciate that you are here, that you're coming home. I want to say happy Valentine's Day to my husband, who's gone to bed an hour and a half ago. And to everybody out there, happy Valentine's Day as well. To Bethel Hanbury, thank you so much for inviting us to come and read with you guys. That was an incredible time that I know that I had, and I know other board members did as well. Thank you for the invites. Keep those coming. I love seeing the schools. It's been really rewarding. Just also, thank you all for your patience. We are working really hard, and kind of when you come into something new or an organization, you try to look for the things that are good, that need to stay, and then the things that you have to look at that need to be maybe a little bit improved. So, if you will, just continue to have patience with us, but thank you all so very much. Thank you for... you for all you guys, what you do with tech and everything else. But Happy Valentine's Day. I hope you guys go home, and there's some amazing chocolate for you from your local chocolatierian.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Dr. Scott?
Just want to say to the schools, thank you so much for inviting us out for Black History Month. I've really enjoyed visiting the schools, and I'll look forward to visiting this week as well as next week. Also, happy, happy, happy Bus Drivers Appreciation Week. We truly appreciate what you do with our students. You give them the high five before they get to school, and you make sure that they arrive home safely. So thank you for that, and Happy Valentine's Day to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. Gregory?
Happy Valentine's Day. We had a productive meeting debrief with the Richland County Sheriff's Department last Thursday, following our recent bomb threats. And as a result, wanted you to know that we've tightened up on our inter-agency communication to include quarterly meetings with the Sheriff's Department, clarified the decision-making process to ensure consistency and uniformity among our schools, and reviewed our evacuation plans. For our community, we have no new information available on the investigation into those threats. The Richland County Sheriff's Department advised us that releasing any details would jeopardize their investigation, which is the last thing we want to do. But thank, we want to thank Sheriff Lot and the Sheriff's Department for great partnership. Look for the district's new public service announcement on safety that will be coming next week. And I too would like to reiterate, Happy Bus Driver Appreciation Week. I enjoyed breakfast with our dedicated sped drivers at the Killian Hub this morning. So thank you, Mr. Anderson. And last week, as y'all mentioned, we celebrated National Counseling Week with our great counselors. And I too have enjoyed the Black History Month activities at our different sites. With that said, I want to end with a quote from Rabbi Jonathan Case from a recent meeting of the district's ministerial alliance. He said, "One family, one community." And that really resonated with me. And I want to thank our family, staff, and the community for your continued support.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. And I share the same sentiments that my colleagues share. The other, the only other highlight that I'd like to mention is just to recognize, led by Major Perry at Spring Valley High School, our four JROTC groups met this past Saturday with hundreds of other people in the community to pack food for Harvest Pack. And through four or five hours of packing, I was on the second shift, we packed over 100,000 meals. Most of those meals will be going to students and people within the Richland Two community. So I want to recognize them and say thank you, and just wish everybody a Happy Valentine's Day. With that, do I have a meeting or a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Porter?
I move to adjourn the February 14, 2023 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion? Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The meeting is adjourned, the motion carries.